I want to call this meeting, uh, ordered and we are going to conduct some business. I'll call the main ten board commissioners into session for a meeting of purpose of the business. I'd like to welcome everybody. Good to have everybody here, all the friends and neighbors. Uh, we do have a couple of quick bits of business while doing this. You may want to go ahead. Uh, Rick is going to collect these orders for you if you've not filled that out. He didn't go in to do that.
There's nobody besides you can do two, Ron.
Gentlemen, we do have, uh, I think Paul, if you get this, Ron, um, we did get bids in on the Highlands School renovation. You guys are probably interested in this. We had allocated a renovation amount of 1.5 million for Highland School. The low bid came in, Michael Ward construction with 1,338, uh, 000. So that is within budget. And Jack, do you want to address that? Make your recommendation?
Yeah, that is the low bid. I'm going to draw the process. We also have a letter from our architect, our project, a letter recommending that you have to give permission for the contract to Michael Ward for that project. And I would say the attorney can correct if I need, if you need to, that the board takes action to award the contract to Michael Ward. That is subject to us closing our financial, uh, on Friday, project on Friday at nine o'clock and also subject to him acquiring and having in place this performance bond and so forth.
Okay. Based on those two criteria, I'd...
Yeah, I think we need to add one. It really should be on the condition that we close and go one step further and specifically authorize you as chair to execute this contract.
Okay.
All right. That's our recommendation, Mr. Chairman, for the board's decision.
Mr. Chairman, I like the motion that we...
Of course, it's...
Whatever Chester says is what the motion will try.
The subject to the closing, the subject to their performance bond and my signing off on both.
Stipulations is put forth and the chairman, given the chairman authorization to sign off on it.
We have motion and second, and this again is for the Highland School renovation. Much needed project, gentlemen, as you know, so we're happy to be doing this tonight. Any other discussion about the bids?
What if, if he can provide a performance bond, then we can do two things. We could go them all out or we can go back to the next highest bidder, correct?
We can, but he'll have to provide all that information before we give him a notice to proceed.
You just gave him, he's got till Friday to do that?
Yeah, he'll, he'll, and he'll have it. He's already been working on a lot of this on the...
Who is? I don't believe I know.
He's a contractor out of Ashville. Uh, he's got a good reputation. He's done some work to make the business before.
I think he has. He's also maybe done some work over the past, a lot in Ashville. And, uh, he's very, very familiar with his project, been through it with the architect several times. And he's already got a lot of preliminary things in place in order to start the project as soon as possible because we need to get...
If he ain't got his stuff for a performance bond, he's good luck. He's, you just dominate.
He doesn't take long. Actually, I did talk to him yesterday and if the board approves a contract with him, go ahead, he'll be prepared to actually start working on May 1st.
He was the original low bidder.
He was.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Oppose, that motion passes unanimously. And I believe I was informed today that work began May 1st. Is that correct? Um, one other bit of information, just to let you know, uh, under appointments, Mr. Carl Westby, who is the chairman of our planning board, his term is expiring on that board. And I was, I realized that today. And we are advertising that as, is under our board guidelines. I think we have to advertise that a minimum of 30 days. Is that right, Jack?
I'm not sure if 30 days is what they say, but he is eligible to serve on that.
He can, but he would have to apply. But I just want to get that in minutes that we are advertising that appointment and others, folks could apply for that.
You, Mr. Chairman, what we can do is own the website we put, the board will consider this appointment at the meeting and this day. And that way, folks know they need to apply for that.
Now, Chester, I think at this point, maybe we should do that in our June meeting. We're, we're inside of 30 days or maybe.
Unless we find that that advertising period is shorter than 30 days. If we can meet that, we can go ahead and do that and move on in May. I'm not sure we're going to meet that time.
Right. Well, Paul, we're putting the minutes, Mike, that we will, we will consider that at the latest at our June meeting and make that one. And Carl will continue to serve until that time.
Mike, you probably get idea too, the gentleman, Matt, and see anybody else that's coming.
Jack, any other business?
The assault business, we asked the board to consider that.
Okay. Uh, gentlemen, I don't know. It's very informal. Let me turn it over to the town of Highlands, Mr. Mayor, and what you guys might have to the group, discussions that you might want to...
Well, we have, yes, it's been kind of quiet. We're working on budgets. We appreciate the county's efforts, the efforts community in the school and getting renovation put together. Working on repairs to our swimming pool and look forward to working with the county on the upcoming new pool construction. We'd like to get together with the board at some point and talk about working some things out on inspection processes and something like that.
On, on what?
Inspection processes.
Okay.
Talk through that process. Other than that, uh, does the commissioner have anything in particular? Looking forward to getting into a good season in Highland.
Good. How's your, how's your tourist season shaping up?
Well, I think it's going to be good. Still to learn yet. Everybody here backed up. Last weekend was the first weekend it really felt like we were back in the season. So it's going to start cranking up. I think we're going to have a good year. Everything we hear about real estate and Dr. Rodney in particular, a building going on up there, going on in Franklin, going on in Jackson County, something I'm positive about. We've got a lot of good, a lot of good things pointed out right now.
Thank you. How's your property, your bridge? They look like they're going to do pretty good this year, in the season, actually, or about last year, if you put it that way?
Um, I'd like to be dealing with heaven to look into on our landfill up there. Currently, they do not make C and D cook on Saturdays. That is, well, they ain't pleased for a lot of people around. Saturday is the only day that they have to take that to work stuff, especially homeowners and the remodels up. It's just maybe you're open and then staffed and just waiting to see if we can actually start allowing C and D exposure for them every Saturday.
I don't know the answer to that, Jack. Do you?
I'll talk to Chris Saul about it and I'll be led by him. I like to stress for him because I've had people also kind of mean ask me, but also personally, because I don't have time. I can get something to take down there. There's no way you can get rid of this stuff.
Has it always been closed, don't you say?
Not yet open, but you cannot take...
C and D, right?
Right, yeah.
They've always been there?
Yes.
I don't know. I can't, nothing they've had that open or fast.
Do we know why that's that way, Jack?
I think this is a twenty-four issue. C and D is brought to Highland, but still has to come to Franklin. And so, uh, I don't know that our contractor who owns that, owns on Saturday. So it may be just an operational issue about getting the violence down to the landfill here. And I'll have to get some more details on that, give us more reasons why they've been doing that. They may have a good reason for it or not. I don't know.
Well, Jack, if I may, it might be something we need to get this done. You know, I can understand it when somebody's building something, they got a lot of stuff, but maybe it's easy restricted to private individuals where you're not getting an access for it all to do.
If you could restrict it, probably just pick a couple loads, some kind of BRI for most people. You want to tear a building down, you don't have your way to take care of it and it builds up. So then it makes, it makes it hard to overcome that during the regular...
Maybe look into the individual thing.
You look, let's take a look at that and see if some modification like that would be the real concern that you have. I mean, if someone's going to do a major tear down, we've had a few of those.
Right.
We won't go into that, but, but we need, we need to got a plan for that and make sure that we get it because it has to end up, has to actually end up down the land on that side. You don't have a sanitary landfill or seed in the landfill. So just take a look at Paul and Chris and, uh, if you will, if you will, get your contact as much longer reach you, Paul, for all questions.
Appreciate it. Okay, very good, gentlemen. Anything else special? That's all I have. All right, County of Franklin, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Board. Oh, it's good to see everybody here. I gotta give Bob the stop and sleep for the end of the morning. Look at this place.
Franklin.
You just may not know who the...
You may should. Bob, you're the only, get your man over here.
This is not a town we...
I know it, you know. And I'm going to consider this an anomaly because I really feel like it's just how it worked out tonight, but not normally. We try to mix and mingle a little bit more. I just, of course, I just came back from uptown, Outdoor 76 is open. They're serving craft beer on a J.C. Jacobs over there. It's amazing that it's good. It's part of the, it's part of the biz week thing that Mr. Jacobs there, if not a couple directors is going out. He's doing a heck of a job, really he is for the, for the whole county. Warren Kay, I think, on board. Our first full-time town manager. We've, he's on board now with us and we've had a, had a retreat and we're working on issues and working on the future. Like everybody, the revenues are down, so we're trying to find some way to make everything work without increasing taxes in any way because everybody's often supposed to be unheard. I can tell you all without any real secrets that the real big issue coming up for the town and also for the county will be the expansion of the water source. We've had some preliminary studies done to determine potential locations, but there's such a lead time for several years for permitting and testing and design version, all of that. And because the very nature of the water is, is that most of the use will be presumably outside the city limits. It's going to take some good cooperation with at least the county of Franklin and the county of Macon, but we, we have that going for us and it's something that we can use to work together. And we look forward because we're going to be needing to start meeting together soon. Again, because of just the amounts of time that it takes to get all of the permitting and stuff. But we're going to find at the town, uh, and all, and I would like to give the opportunity for you to offer in the warm summer, anybody if you want to expand upon what I said, I'm giving you the time of getting more control.
Well, I will say about the TJ, we have saw an increase in revenue as far as tourists coming to the areas since when it all went down in 2008. We've been tracking it since 2008 to present, and we have slowly started seeing it come back. So that's a positive sign.
Do you say like for the current month or for the year, year to date?
Year, year to date.
January through April, you see an uptick?
An uptick, yeah. From 2008, this is when you start to see it drop off. Nine, 10, it slowly starts coming back. And then this past year, we've really saw it come back.
I want to be, uh, expand a little on what Joe was talking about, our water study. One of the things that we're doing is we have a draft water study in our hand that basically evaluated our water treatment facility and our infrastructure. And in conjunction with that, which is, which we hopefully present to our board in June, there's some work that our staff has been doing to sort of get those to correspond with what we think our needs are going to be in the future, both the inside of city limits and the TJ areas and where our growth areas are. And at that point, once we, we come to an educated conclusion on what we think that growth is, we'll know what our plant can produce, we'll know what our capabilities are. And then we'll have to sit down and make a very difficult decision on how much, if any, to expand what we've got at renovate. And obviously, that's a, for those of you who know about water, sure, that's about a $10 per gallon expansion when you do that. So maybe gallons will cost you $10,000. So obviously, that's a big chunk of money that we have to invest in what we're going to do. So we basically wanted to get our information together. A lot of requests we have for, for that water in particular come from outside of city limits. So we need to come to you all and explain to you, this is what we think we need for the city limits. This is what we're going to have to have in the future for the next 20 years in city limits. Here's what we've got left and here's where we think we can provide it. And then we need to come to the table with you all and decide, is that sufficient? Do you want to work with us to do something different? Or where do we go from here? And that may be enough. So we, we just want to get all the information on the table to you all and for us in particular, but for you all to know where we're headed. And then if we need to adjust that in some way, then we'll be making educated decisions on that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I believe we're checking out on that.
Let me mention one funny bit. It involves the water, the, I don't know if you've got it on here, Mr. Chairman, but the, uh, the original river and water pocket, that was finished, you know, last year or a year and a half ago. And the other part of that was, we're in funding with the Swiss colony, water pocket, the warrant set on several of the meetings and contractors, can, brothers and sons, whoever is enjoying that job. We had progress, it's every few weeks. They're on schedule. We're expecting that job change due to the next 30 days. And so I know all the people in those areas, Swiss colony and Margaret Gray and some of the group and if you're not so, we're really going to appreciate how good our water source is to be at the town. So we had originally had a meeting with most of the residents out there. The whole one is going on. Pretty touch up, trouble with them. And as a result, staying in close connection with the people who live out there. I hate to say this, I'm not, we haven't had very few complaints and very few problems going through a residential labor. That's not unusual. We appreciate cooperation of the town on helping us put that project together because it's going to benefit those people out there who don't live in town. We appreciate the work.
So that was mutual. They went both ways on that part.
Mr. Mayor, now?
Believe it is.
All right. Uh, let me just sort of state the obvious here. We, this, these joint meetings were happening before I was here, I guess, maybe before Ryan, were you here when it started?
Well, it was started and it stopped for many years. And then we picked it back up five years, six years.
Six years ago. And let me just get on my soapbox, man. I think when people, it's the same people that elect us, the town of Franklin elects you guys, the county as a whole elects us, the town of Highland elect you. But it's the same people, either taxpayers or people. And they expect us to work together. And I think our, everybody in our country, including this county, is so sick of our federal government and how they do not work together. Republicans get over here, Democrats get over here, don't get anything done, they don't talk to each other, they don't get problems worked out. They expect us and they should demand that we work together. And I think it's good that we do that. And I'm, I'm proud to be a part of this process. You may think, well, this is a waste of time to get together and meet. But it's about relationships. It's like everything else. You need to know who each other are. So we, perfect example, when this, uh, this thing happened with, with the plant over here, uh, you know, that, that was a terrible thing. We were going to lose 100 jobs. And, and the county of Franklin and the county got together and stopped that thing from sliding the creek and saved about $4 million a year in payroll. And that's what taxpayers ought to expect from government. They should expect us to represent their best interest. So I'm glad we do this. I hope we'll continue doing that. Maybe three times a year, three, four times a year, if not a lot. But just, just a quick comment on my part. With the counties, some things that you guys might be interested in and may impact you. Maybe you had a recreation park pool renovation, if you've been keeping up with that and driven by it. That's very close to being completed. We actually voted to do that back last fall, I'm going to say it was last October. And some work was begun out there yesterday, met with Seth. It's down to the concrete work around the pool. Then they come in and put a plaster, file a plaster coat on the pool itself and the fence. So that's, it looks like Memorial Day weekend is going to be the opening weekend of the pool. I did talk to Seth in the past and I, I know this perfectly because my son Matt was one of the lifeguards. And I explained to Matt, that's not a real job. When you, you, you take off your shirt and walk around in the bathing suit, you talk to girls from our sunglasses. That's not a job. So, but he did that for five summers. But I can tell you, the pool didn't take in the money paid lifeguard. It didn't take in the money paid lifeguard. But Seth is thinking with these new renovations and upgrades that they're going to operate at capacity this year. So hopefully that's going to be at least an operation that's going to pay for itself. It's no longer going to be a cost. So that's, that's looking good. Memorial Day weekend looks like open. They, they hope to get open. I think Jack, the weekend before that, but with the weather, I think the concrete had been held up a little bit and baked concrete. You want to address that?
No, I think you're exactly right. It is going to be a fabulous improvement, that facility. Most of y'all from around here have been around here a long time. And that was open in the early 70s, around 74, I guess it was.
72, lifeguard the second year.
That's not a real job, Jim.
Well, you don't have one. Your boot kids kept getting far. They had a high dive then.
Yeah.
The lawyers took care of that then.
But it's not as deep now as it was back then. It doesn't have any high dives on anymore. But it's going to be a really good, it's going to be really good because the big pool part of the pool is going to be probably separate from the kiddie part. The kiddie part is going to be covered up. As a matter of fact, I was kidding around with Seth, the chairman, that when we have that grand open down there, I thought it'd be a really good idea. We'll get maybe a swim meet for twins elected officials and find a meet of it.
I think.
My raw crowd, what do you think?
They come with high necks.
It is going to offer a way. We have an actual contractor on that job, contractor only job, but a really good consultant that helped us on. And I think everybody will be proud of work.
And the work was done by Augusta Aquatics did, did pool work. We'd have a local that could or would do that. But the rest of the work, the pool house, concrete, the rest of it was all with local contractors. So that was a good thing. We built some money back into our local contractors. And that, that project is coming down into the last couple of weeks. We're all moving ahead with the Park Meadows Recreation Project. We've...
Kevin, no thanks. The waitress just came in and said that before she'll put the order in to order your food, everybody gets a choice of super salad at the salad bar. So after you go get that, then she'll put your food order in.
You have to salad bar.
We, we need to go get super salad.
Yes, and then she'll put the order in because she hasn't the door for your food yet. She's waiting for you to go get super salad.
John, go get super salad.
Go get your salad. Talk about the Park Meadows Project. That is underway. Chester, we're set to close on that sometime between now and 30th. Chester's working on that. We have applied for a part of, which is a Park Recreation Trust Fund grant for $500,000. We do, can we share that ranking thing, Jack? Is that okay to say that or not?
Obviously, it's looking really good.
Okay, we, we got a call from some folks at the state and out of about 90 applications, let's say we're top few. They have a point system as far as ranking. It looks really good. We're going to get that grant. We do have a vacuum of Senator Davis and Representative West. Representative West is on the appropriations committee. So we are very hopeful that we're going to get that to help develop that property and move ahead with that soon. We have a couple of, three things that pertain to Highlands. I thought it'd be appropriate to mention that. We have the Highland School Project, the Highland School Project, which was mentioned earlier. And also that meeting, I'm going to ask Commissioner Tate if he would address those issues briefly.
Thanks, Kevin. As Kevin just mentioned, we're planning on having our May meeting, commissioner meeting in Highlands. So I'd like a little direction from you all while you're here about location, exact time, or if there's any requests, just a word about how much your sound or anything else that we might need. I think we're shooting for May 20 and maybe 6:00 PM. Do you want to, or are you actually in our pool, Steve?
I was just, I should be saying, I've already included my staff, whatever it means in terms of communications, we make it available.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? And we hope you guys will help us, help us size that. We'd like to get some assistance out of Highlands out and maybe discuss some issues that are hurting the Highlands. It's been a long time. I don't remember the commission meeting Highlands by the time the commissioner told you about it. You guys certainly represent a huge part of the tax base. And so we were certainly in recognition of that. So I'd like to, maybe, maybe to have some meetings up there on occasion. So that's what this is about. It's just about being up there and letting your folks know that we hear what they have to say.
At this meeting, I was planning on, it's totally our normal county business. We're absolutely taking the county wide. We've also had several issues that pertain to Highlands. And one of those, in all of your minds, is the Highlands Pool. We as a board have unanimously agreed before board change here at the last election to assist with the renovation process and fund that. And we will plan on taking that up at that point. I think we've gotten, Jeff, correct me, I think we've got the letter of the states and the bounds. And again, we'll be talking about that and trying to figure out how we're going to, at that point in May 20. The second item is the Highland School Project. I'm sure all of you are aware of kind of what's going on there. It's pretty much renovating the Highlands Elementary wing of the building. A lot of the access reveal has already happened. All the students are there right now walking on concrete floor because all the tile has been removed. There's our renovation thing there that's already started. And hopefully after tonight's meetings, we get a loan process completed. Finally, some a lot of hurdles to jump, but I think we're really finally close to getting this happening. Hopefully, it'll be wrapped up, the plans are going to be wrapped up within the first two weeks of the school starting. I think the boiler and heater units were there when I was in school back in early 70s. As well as the air conditioning units, which primarily encompasses opening the window. So I'm excited to finally get some modern updates to the Highlands School. I'd be very excited to be part of that. While I'm mentioning that, I got to give Brian Steeler props because a lot of this project probably wouldn't be happening if you hadn't had 10 people match from the town of Highlands. I definitely appreciate you organizing that. Actually signed his name on the dotted line to make sure that's going to happen. I don't know if all y'all pay that attention. He definitely deserves a nice pat on the back and ended for his efforts with that.
Thanks, Mr. Tate. We were busy with the mention. You also paid him. He's a local sponsor. Jimmy Tate and Brian Steeler, one of them, who's direct, who's called or transferred have stepped up to be the local manager, the local manager for that man and that project over the next 10 years by all the work that he's contributed to the school. So, so they would do it, they do it implicitly. They do it because it's a project that helps a lot of people. I think Brian and Tim are a big commitment to building that. And without their doing it, I'm not sure we'll build the quality of the future. No interest, nor build that project. So.
That match is managed before you go to get it out.
Thank you, Jack. Again, Brian, I just want to give you a tremendous slap on the back for helping organize, push that car down the road, I'd say, Steve. Again, there's a couple of other Highlands issues that we're bringing up.
Again, there's, there's a couple other Highlands issues that we're bringing up at that meeting, and we're having those included. Any questions, comments, thoughts y'all have for us, we can talk more to that. We will have it, if you're not familiar with the Hades, we will at the beginning of the meeting, we'll have a sign up tab, and give you that opportunity to sign in and speak to the other topic that you feel you can give for about minutes. The residents of our way that y'all think might have issues, and we encourage you to bring them, so we can hear them.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. As you know, we're, we're in the middle of our budget process. That is underway, and I think it has been publicized, and the board members can back me up on this. We did meet with Jack back in January, and we realized, state budget cuts, federal budget cuts, we realized all that, but we did ask Jack to put together a budget that reflected no tax increase. So we've always sort of made that commitment that we would not raise taxes. The difficulty with that is, of course, the school system professionals have been hard hit by federal stimulus cuts. Stimulus money was, last year was a little over a million dollars, I think, and they had a one point one million dollar reversion from the state, so that adds up to about roughly two million dollars that accounted for the school system's short, just to maintain what they had last year. So we've asked him to work with us and keep the best we can, work our best to fund it at the best level we can, but at the same time, I don't, I don't think we're willing to raise taxes to do that. That's just where we are, and we've made that clear to you. And just so you know, we have to get the school system to continue to help the school system to the best of our ability. I think we've all made that commitment, but we're not willing to raise taxes to do it. That's just where we are. Legislative Day, this is the day county commissioners go to Raleigh to essentially lobby our legislators, and we plan to do that, know at least three of us are going, three or possibly four commissioners are going, plus Jack, are going. That's May twenty-second, we'll be going to Raleigh for that. And I will say, we do have an excellent relationship with our legislators, and have had, at least from my experience on the board, they're, they're very good to work with and been very supportive, and we hope that continues. Jack, you want to mention the automobile tax change affecting?
Again, what we're talking about is Assembly Day, I think the league has a December, they did this, they may do some issues there, they brought this down. They ended up together on those, both groups, and probably for that, against what everybody say. They seem to have tried on the way to stimulus for elected officials, or else down there. And so the county commissioner association will pass, just to pass in time here, if everyone gets extremely affected by the problem. And getting legislation approved and something like that, so. So do you think that the council has had to do with that, or vice versa? There are, there are a number of bills that are, that are being put forth in the General Assembly, and some of them sound really good on the circuit. The one that protects our taxes yesterday is reducing qualifications in farm people, some deferred taxes on farmland and so forth. And that sounds really good, to defer taxes on agricultural land, or forest and so forth. They're greatly reduced now. Basically what happens when the General Assembly increases that process where more people qualify for deferred taxes, what they're actually doing then is causing mostly the counties to, so if I give very long a tax break, I don't have that stop to increase it a little bit, so sometimes they don't think about that second part of it, just to quick forward to get the breaks, so.
Very long, very long.
But, 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 basically going, when they start, when they start messing around with local revenues, city, other county revenues, taking away and giving to other people that are affected, shifting, and your tax base from one group to another, there's not really creating any more money, and it's not really giving the benefit that's in the country. So our tax, tax assessment, most folks are very aware of that, and voice their opposition to those things, protecting resources that the county has. But there are some other issues that are coming up. One thing that wasn't passed, as Kevin mentioned, I think it's been eight years ago now, that the state decided that they would finally agree to do what most all of the states do, is when you renew your license plate, you pay the tax on your own, most all of those states have been done for years and years. So North Carolina decided to do that eight years ago, and they put on every year's, and those are, so again, July first, when you renew your license plate, and the tax bill for issues, the tax will collect, big city and county taxes, and they're big issues, and we get the fact, net result ought to be thirty-five, a hundred percent for those taxes, right, reflecting probably ninety percent or less in a year's time. But that, that should help with issues for that, that does affect, so, you need to be aware of what people are going to be asking about, and that is, you always take eight years, and they've only got a few, they're ready to do it, and July first.
Thank you, Jack. The next thing we're going to be dealing with, having to deal with for a while, is mental health issues, and Commissioner Ronnie Beal has been very active at the state level with mental health, and there's some changes as far as the LMEs. Ask Commissioner Beal if he would take a moment, just sort of, just sort of current news, and of course, brief this about, but I think it'd be important for Ronnie to brief the media, and also brief these two, two town boards about what's coming up with mental health, Ronnie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and some other things, I was in Raleigh last week, and if you've read the governor's budget, there are some things that we totally agree with, and I think our legislators agree with, and some things we totally don't, as our legislators do. One thing is about the funding rules. You've got the part of grant, the Golden Leaf Fund, the rural center money. You know, just to say again, if you don't remember, that twenty counties control the number of people in the legislature. Eighty counties are rural counties, which is us, of course. So we have some real concerns there. Warren mentioned about the grant, you heard the county manager mentioned, I mean, it is really, that's what propelled us to have water and so forth, so. Those are some of the things we're working on too. On the mental health side, if you haven't heard, Friday a week ago at four o'clock in the afternoon, the DSS revoked Western Highlands contract for the Medicaid waiver that you apply to under the mental health. Medicaid waiver is basically your pay per capita. The Western Highlands, if you don't know, Smoky Mountain accomplishes now fifteen counties. Stretch in the middle, which includes Ruston, Haywood, Buncombe, no, not Haywood, Henderson, Buncombe, old Pennsylvania, Ruston, that section of counties, there are seven of them, that's in between sort of, they have revoked their, really their contract. So that will be revoked as of July thirty-first, so that will, they will be, obviously put into an under that, and we have been discussing the Western Highlands and with the state about that. We have another meeting on Thursday. So we don't know where that's going to stay, that's really, they're changed, but we think that we have to be careful, further out west again, because that will put the center of the universe above the counties we all love, that's where the population is, so. But we'll be watching that closely, just see how that turns out. I think you'll probably see a whole lot more news about that coming soon. Another thing we've worked on is the magistrates, if you know the governor's budget, he did replenish the magistrates, which is give hours back, hyphen magistrate, which is really important, that's in the governor's budget, has not passed the full legislative budget, but we hope that that, that holds. It does have the support of our legislators, and we hope that that holds in the budget, that it will make Macon County back to where it should be on the magistrate. And on the mental health, again, we have met with the magistrates for the first time, I think, to put our magistrates and the mental health people together in this room, and we're going to try to make that, to try to cut down on the voluntary commitments. As you're a taxpayer, you have five life weekends, you can do the math, you've got a law office checking our week five, a time and a half. See that affect in the serving budget also, and they range anywhere from a six-year-old to a, to a seventy-one-year-old. So, so we're trying to cut down on the voluntary commitments if we can, that helps, that saves a lot of money for the taxpayer. So we're, we're trying to get the magistrates and the mental health people together before, in front of the process, not tightens the process. So we're working on that, trying to put a program in there. So, and I'll just say this, Mr. Chairman, we certainly like to welcome Warren Tate from the town of Franklin, and we're glad to have you here, glad you're here, Tate. You'll be a great asset to everyone here, we're glad you're here.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. As all of you know, Commissioner Haven is very involved in TDA tourism. I know he's a professional, but as a commissioner, and he, he asked me for a moment, he wanted to address things coming up with tourism and some of his comments, and observations about that, so. Commissioner Haven, I recognize you.
Friends, I think for a minute to talk about, some of what you were saying there a few minutes ago about the revenue speedup, I want to elaborate just a little bit on. About four years ago, there were some movie groups that came up the Appalachian Trail making a film, you'll probably remember a little bit of it as they come through. Well, they actually, last year, there were some people coming through, getting the rest of a lot of that put together, and they made a national movie that they played in Germany. About ten percent of the tourism coming through right now with the hikers is, is Germans and offense and things where it's played on national TV. And I know Lady Collins was speaking a song about lane three sixty-six up there, and I know that lots of people, they've verified to come in there that speak in English with very broken accent, but it's bringing a lot of people into this area right now. Also, there was a movie that was released last year, they were called Beauty Beneath the Dirt, so it's starting to be that there's lots of these films coming, companies that's recognizing the tourism in the Appalachian Trail. And feeling a little of it, seeing that don't know about it, the Appalachian Trail starts only a hundred and six miles south of here, and the hikers are starting to move about ten miles a day when they come into here. So by the time they start somewhere between ten and twelve days, we get to benefit a lot of money that they bring in here, not only to just stay in a motel room, but I've done several meetings that, like in Rotary in Port Hady, and I think you was a better commissioner, Bill, when I brought that one in, had a receipt where he just spent eighteen hundred dollars buying a gear gear three, it was outfitted the day before, and it was seven hundred, I think, lane three had just opened, and another had just spent seven hundred something dollars there. Well, since March first, I've been working every day, multiple hours, to get these people in and take them around to resupply and buy their foods to go back out, and I'm seeing them putting a lot of money into our tourism. I'm glad to see this, I'm glad to see a build up coming, I'm thankful they've paid my bills too. But me and Commissioner Beal yesterday, as you mentioned, talking a little bit about the people who come here to the gem mines, and that's one of the big, big, big tourism that used to be here, and I'd love to see people tap a little bit more in some advertising dollars, put that out there, because we can bring it back up, or I feel like we could at least. In tourism, I know that's not the goal, I've had many people come up to me and say, we can't live on tourism, since we need a lot of other jobs, and I've always lived by that, we've got to do what we got to do, but present time to work what we got with. But, because they're coming through, I am happy to see the tourism up this year, and notice our checks, and we've been sending in TDA equipment right from the U.S. But at the same time, I got some information, if they will be coming through here, I don't know if it's going to be this year or later, but I was told by a person that's taken on the trail, that said he worked for movie producer, that some of them have been talking about an ABC, that they may possibly film this through here, and the way he sounded is pretty much positive of it. Well, we've had lots of parts and skits in these movies done right around, they make them down here with the taxi, and they're just now getting them on the air, a lot of places, but that's one place, and they're starting to build this up, so. Anyway, I hope I can see those folks come in, you see them out there, give them a ride, and call us over one of the motels, we're going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. All right. We've heard it. One more mention about the business economy, folks have probably noticed, is our Biz Week, the county's hosting and sponsoring through an ABC, several events, I think someone mentioned earlier, you mentioned the Outdoor Seventy-Six, there's several events going on through the week. The large event, and I really hope that a hundred percent of people in this region can be there, Thursday night, this Thursday, two nights from now, at six P.M. There's going to be the Biz Week banquet, and it's going to be held at the fellowship hall of Holly Springs Baptist Church. Tony Almeida is a senior advisor to Governor DeGory and for jobs in the economy, and we have, fortunately, been able to get him to come speak to us, and he's an excellent speaker, and certainly be somebody we would want to be able to talk to. So I hope all of you will be there, that's this Thursday at six P.M. And I don't believe there's a cost for that, Jack, it's sponsored by the county, by the EDC, so it's a meal for all living, the time to fellowship and get together with business and community leaders. Jack, anything else?
This is also perfect for Main Park Society, to recognize what the competition in the county has done jobs, and the business festival recognition, both businesses in the county have done good jobs, and they need to keep their form on, so keep on promoting. Our march would be a positive, we owe our existing citizens a special thank you, this is the one time here to get a chance to do that, so we did this.
Jim, that's all I had. Mr. Tate, you have anything else?
Well, I mean, on any given day now, about how many hikers come down from the trail to Franklin?
It's varied this year. There's some days that probably in a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty in one day. And the days right now, it's starting to slow down a little bit. I probably got in somewhere between, I don't know, I'm going to shoot the clock and say somewhere between forty and fifty. But I know back here about, about three weeks ago, when it snowed a little bit, there was one day that we had well over two hundred in here, I was full, all three of them, my motel's and my hotel's, Michael's was full, and they had the night scene that they had full of.
And did they come in, they generally stay up in the night?
Well, it was snowing, it was hard, it snowed bright. It was snowing, but they nice, a few days, but generally is really, real stable in that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir? If you could answer this, my personal knowledge, for several reasons. What's the schedule on the rebound?
Well, Jack, we're in the process of getting information now, the schedule will be in the, in the spring of two thousand fourteen, or in the early summer. A double percentage scheduled values for county management review, and basically is your guide to go by, you know, since you're in writing, for all lands and itself, or what the market, like property and building processes, all that, they'll put all the scheduled values, and of course, it will be advertised, publicized and so forth, then basically adopted by board commissioners probably sometime around June of next year. Then, the probably, after they get that, then they'll file the scheduled values, the auditing process that they've connected in the field. It's a massive appraisal, it's not like a field appraisal where you look at specifics, it's a general. So probably be able to calculate all the new values and send notices out of new values to property owners, probably shortly after the first year of two thousand, January or
or February, probably two thousand fifteen. That's only what they do. From that period on, then anybody who has this period of value of their property has a chance to appeal that by board leadership review. It's not going to be a lot that year of two thousand fifteen.
So it'll be on the two thousand fifteen back, it'll be on the back?
Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen year annual budget. And we probably, unless something changes, we're probably, overall, property values go down in the county. Maybe not on the deck of property, but at the bottom line, we probably have a reduction in total value in real estate. And it'll have to, by law, produce for college revenue with the tax rate. So basically says, how much money would we collect from what we're bringing in, same amount of money did this year. What I've seen happen in counties across the state, we've had revaluations last year, a few, their values have gone down, their tax rates have gone up, in order to bring in the same amount of money that's offered. So that'll all be during the fiscal operations of the spring of two thousand fifteen, which will affect July first, two thousand fifteen. I very much appreciate it.
Thanks, sir, good question. Any other questions about that? Anybody else have anything in the county, whether we provide quite a bit of information? Any other questions or comments I would like to discuss?
Y'all have been working really hard.
Ma'am?
Just been working very hard.
We have, had a lot of, had a lot of fun.
Been figuring a lot of the clocks.
A lot of good, a lot of good things going on.
If you didn't hear, the work has begun on the dialysis center. They have, they're moving right along. We're hopeful that, it started out as a twelve, fourteen week schedule, certainly more than five a people for that, and I ain't got much to say about that. So we hope that, a lot of folks in this community is hoping sooner than later that that, that happens. So, but we're excited that it's, that they won't have to cross that mountain again. They're from the Highlands too.
And Commissioner Bill's been very instrumental in that project, working tirelessly, selflessly for that. We first had some citizens come to us, I guess it was next to us a year ago, the Davises, and explaining their flight, driving over the mountain and that kind of thing. And so we began to lobby for this. Commissioner Bill took the ball force and I'll say completely, what a good job you've done there.
Glad it was a lot of folks depending on it. We know how, you know, not only those close to forty that's on dialysis, you have almost ten that do a stage four, which means they would, you know, nothing will change. Dialysis is something you don't skip. You can skip chemo thirteen, you don't skip dialysis. Of course, we have two residents have to go every day, we have to skip. So it's, when you talk, and I've got no most of his families, so Lord, if anything, just bring him out of this room, he will heal, that's it worth it.
When are we thinking of having open?
I'd like to see it open by first of September, but I haven't charged you that. Appreciate how you've done.
That's, that's all I had, Jackie, thank you.
Only other thing that we didn't mention is the business dominance of the state by the championship system. Mr. Bill, I'm knowledgeable about that, most of us here. Some of that push is being made from the local authorities in the state. So most of us is going to follow the General Assembly and questioning the services that we get in our rural areas, like Ron said, about eight counties are considered rural and twenty counties that are where it's a legislature, they're sending the rest of the rural. So our concern is that they may put more money in rural areas and/or, I think it's still some concern, that the state may be looking for a way to get counties back involved in, in our secondary roads like the town street on your streets. And if that were ever to happen, that would be a giant step backwards and a huge tax increase for everybody, but it's in county. If that doesn't happen, I don't have any comments on that.
Well, we just, you know, we're down there last week, we're talking, they're looking at combining divisions. If they should combine, we're going to division four then. Your next division would be Mountain County in that area. So we, we feel that, we would certainly hope, we hope Commissioner Todd does not consider that or not propose that. We're watching it very closely. Those inside the DOT thinks that it's, that's likely to happen, we're not sure if that is the first step. We're one of five states, if you don't know, that the state takes care of the secondary roads. If you don't know why your gas is cheaper, you go to Georgia or where else, they got a hundred DOTs. We don't. So we do pay a little more on gas, but for those of us in rural communities, you have to convince those down there that twenty miles in Makin County is different than twenty miles on forty from Durham to Raleigh. It's twenty miles of difference from here to Mount I. So it is a big concern about the funding. So we'll, the only thing I can say, Mr. Manley, is, and I know the chairman is and most of these boys are really watching those things closely, watching these bills that come through. They look so good on the outside. And I did a, for David, like, excuse me, you know, even, they, you have to be real careful what, what you ask for there. So hopefully, that will happen, it will really, I think, I think by losing our division would be a massive blow to the far west county.
Did I correct you that they're talking about scrapping the equity formula?
That's exactly right. Start a whole new formula, and that's another thing, the equity formula, if you're not familiar with that, you know, we did this, RPO, some of this room served on that. I was chairman of it for a while and they had an equity formula that was based on, trying to find out the need, not based on per capita people. If you look at per capita in Highlands and the needs they have, going down to twenty-eight out of Highlands, they're not never going to get enough. So, so that was what was there. Now that's looked at being changed now and that could, that could also really, you know, when you live in a small property, I was talking to Mike Evergins from Graham County, of course has, has eighty-two hundred people, so for smaller counties, and we're listed, of course, we're a smaller county also, and you look at double offer. Some of these things, they're, it's the reason to give you some concern. We'll keep looking and, and of course, Association of County Commissioners, which really, as these boys will tell you here, the Democratic public can hang in there. I mean, you're looking to see what's best for your county. And it don't matter who's in charge of the legislature, it's one in Harvey County. This board has always been one to step up and say, yeah, regardless of what the politics is. We just introduced a resolution from Commissioner Tate about the part of grants that went all over the statement, and now that got attention. So I think that'll do some good, so.
Well, let me mention right there, I, you know, we've, we've had sister to, don't want to mention any names, we've had people, when we get involved in state issues, we've had comments that we shouldn't, we don't be worried about Makin County and not worried about the state. Let me tell you something, we don't live in a bubble, we don't live in a vacuum. We live in the state of North Carolina. And this board is very involved in state issue. We, we go to these meetings, we involve ourselves with our fellow county commissioners. A good example is this rate increase that the State Spring Court just struck down. This board mentioned, we, we passed a resolution opposing that, I know you, you guys did too. We know and did that, we called our fellow commissioners in other counties and asked them to do it and send it. And don't think that doesn't get sent hurt. This last increase that Duke proposed, we passed that resolution, Ron, last month, or last month? And I picked up the phone and called the chairman of Cherokee County, I've called the chairman of Jackson County, let's see, Haywood County?
Graham County.
Graham County. And every one of them did it, they took our resolution, changed it to their county, to the name, and passed it. And we got that in. So we're trying to be involved in some of these state issues, it does happen. These things do matter back then. So, you know, if you have issues and you know we're going on the state level, let us know. It's up to, a tool that we've got, as, as these guys can all tell you, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, just like you're looking at municipalities, a very powerful group, a very powerful lobby in Raleigh. As a matter of fact, Ronnie, I think we had five legislative goals last legislative session, all five of them came to fruition. Either we asked that things not be done, or we asked that things be done, and all five of those were, were addressed by the legislature. Because you've got commissioners in every county in North Carolina stand up and say, hey, we think you need to do this or not do this. They listen. And so it's, it's important that we involve ourselves in state politics. We can't just stick our head in the sand and make the county hide here. Because what they do in Raleigh and what they, and we just came back from Washington, and three of us went up there, and just things like the, the job corps was, we found out through the grapevine, it's getting ready to be closed. We hand delivered a letter to Congressman Madison and Senator Hagan and, and.
Senator Burr.
Burr. And it looks like they stopped that. So, you know, you, you've got to be proactive and get involved with these people, let them know you're here, kick and scream a little bit when we need to, and that's, that's part of it.
But if the association, if, you know, if I do succeed and become president, the vice president from this far west, and the only one from this far west was Miles Preetti forty years ago. So if, if that's successful, of course, I take them out to every meeting for Makin County as well. I'm sure, I mean, today I talked to commissioners from Brunswick, Roberson, Hartford, Curritown, these is all, that's all the way from Calabash, North Carolina to the Virginia line, but they have, a lot of them have the same thing we do. And we were talking today about the part of grants and the resolution Jimmy put forward. So these things do matter, and you have to be there. Sometimes, yeah, you can't believe what you're seeing, but you have to be there.
While you're talking about part of grant, that's Parks Recreation Trust Fund, very little of that money's come to the western part of the state, it's all going to the Piedmont, it's come down to coastal areas. Well, we're beginning to apply, Graham County has an application in now, I know, and we've done application in, we plan to put another application in.
And lose your foot in? And lose your foot in next week?
And talked to Roger West about it, he made the comment, it's about time some of that money, it's our tax money, it's about time some of that money come back to mountains because it hadn't been doing that. So that's why we, we passed that resolution, introduced by Commissioner Tate, that the state was looking at reducing the part of grants by about sixty percent, were that right there, was that? So we oppose that. Let us, let us get our share.
And where that money come from, you said, well, that comes from the big steps. And some of it comes from offshore oil exploration. That's where that, for the part of that come from.
And they weren't talking about cutting those fees or taxes, they weren't talking about that. That's the, as a conservative, I'm saying, hey, let's cut, let's cut taxes and fees where we can't. They weren't talking about that, they were talking about redirecting money somewhere else. So that's, that's a big difference, and we found out about that. And hopefully it's.
One big concern that we have in this budget is that they have the education lottery, most of their money's supposed to go to schools. And the state's been using lottery, as a matter of fact, we're supposed to actually get out of statewide, get about a hundred and eighty billion dollars a year for public school resources. And that's reduced by about a hundred and thirty dollars a year. And since that, since, the shocking thing about it was, since that lottery went in, and I'm not arguing for his lottery, but since it went in, the amount of money that's been diverted back to state uses, amounts up to almost a billion dollars. That's a lot of money that's been used on a global level for school projects, school resources and operating. So there's still ongoing battle with Association of County Commissioners, because the counties are more involved in that, to, to put pressure on the General Assembly to figure out a way to balance their budget, use that money, if they're going to have a lottery, what it was originally designed to be used for.
Forty percent of the lottery was designed to help students with the students who are detoxed. And by the time it's just two thousand ten, you're looking at a loss of nearly seventy million dollars. If you want to pare that down to Makin County. Lord, how much was our own?
Yeah, about three hundred five thousand.
That's about, we should have gotten over seven.
Ronnie, let me ask you a question. Do you know the percentage of North Carolina lottery is going to advertise?
You can find that out, we have asked some of those questions. That information's not really the bottom, you'd think it is.
Of course not.
We can, they're, we can show what it didn't, was not supposed to be doing. But now to find that out, I can, I can, so we certainly asked that, but I'd like to know that, that's a good question.
And then they tell you, you've got a gambling, they're not going to go gambling. Why are there so much advertising? And I think both the making and the municipal, making and the municipal should be asking questions about how much money is actually going to be advertised.
I'm getting a little bit of a.
Do you even advertise things sometimes?
Well, we certainly bring up, I like to have a little.
You're working differently. You tried to get them one time, we, we loved it.
Anything else that anybody wants to talk about or bring up, Mr. Curtis?
You know, I, I thought it was interesting, Ronnie, we spent two years going through a comprehensive transportation plan that would take the politics out of road building and evidently in just one, about a year, went down the drain.
If we want to have a meeting, I think the chairman will be there, make that meeting, swing y'all meet there. I'm the alternate, we'll run surely about this. It's coming up, see, they're supposed to make some new information, Harvey Curtis, about the direction, where that is, but we certainly hope that a lot of our work that we all worked hard on ain't never going. We'll just have to, you know, we are armed at the end of the day, you know, of course we're all armed with the state.
Anything else, Ma'am?
Just to make one note, probably should have said to me, Joyce, and I got the chance to attend the performance ceremony for the two tenth last past week, and twenty-five members of our two hundred and ten vote heard police national argument are now in very, very Texas, I think, on the way to Afghanistan. So we need to keep them, especially with Texas, very busy.
Are you hearing the two eleven is going here?
Yeah, the two eleven is going to be deployed in the first month as well. So this is important.
That's it, is it? Yeah, right.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
I think dessert, the dirt's being delivered, everybody hanging around busy, let me go ahead and ask the media, I have been requested by Commissioner Tate for us to have a closed session for attorney-client privilege, Chester, with regard to some possible land acquisition. And he's asked we do that, and I know it's about, I think we should, we should do that, so.
Give the help boxes, sir, honey. It's everything.
I'm not leaving until.
Oh, no. Let's, let's go ahead, let's continue to visit and eat, and then when we begin to first, I'll need a motion and second, we'll, we'll close that, we'll just meet here, Chester, and we'll discuss that, so. Anything, anything else, say we're done? Thank you, guys, you're back to your meal, it's been a good evening, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for that.